First thing is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we approve the agenda, I just want to note that I talked with our administrator to give us an update regarding what he's found in research from AMC and other areas regarding the governor's order and what counties should or maybe should not do. I think that's important to do that, but I think we can, just so the public knows, we are going to be talking about it, but probably under the administrator's update.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion on the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin to approve the agenda with some updates from our county administrator. All in favor?
Aye. Right.
Post citizens to be heard. Do we have anything online that we, nothing, okay. Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim, second by Kevin to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, with that, we'll go into the minutes. We got the minutes from May the 12th.
Will approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to approve the minutes from May the 12th. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. With that, we'll go into our weekly update of our 2019 with Kathy McKay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I handed out our latest numbers. You can see since May 25th, the number of cases in Clay County are 373, and we have 24 deaths, and that will be updated every day at 11:00. So that's where we're at right now. The numbers I just received no longer needing isolation are 90. So those are ones that are off the, have followed through with all of their isolation. In North Dakota, they call it, those that are treated, but we call it no longer in isolation on the Minnesota side. And the number of deaths is still, I mean, it's unfortunate that we have deaths, but it's still low, and the hospital systems are still managing with those that need to be hospitalized and those in ICU. So they're managing both on the Fargo side, and then the hospitals throughout Minnesota are also managing those cases. So that's good that we're able to manage those without having to secure other settings, et cetera. We had a mass testing event this weekend that came up fairly quickly. We were notified on Friday about noon. The press release didn't go out till probably 3:00. So they did a fairly fast ramp up to do mass testing at the armory here in Moorhead. And so that went on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday from 9:00 until 5:00, or actually, they started at 10:00. Some of the days, they opened up a little early. We tested somewhere between 855 and 875 residents. So I think the numbers could have been higher.
Is that a three-day total or one day?
That was a three-day total, 855 to 875, around that. So again, I think the numbers could have been higher with a little bit better notification, but that's just how it went. The Guard also did not get much notification in regards to this event either. It happened at all the armories across the state of Minnesota, and I believe there were six armories. Each armory had 1,100 tests available to do. So we didn't, we didn't complete our 1,100 tests. I don't have any information on the other armories and how well they did. My public health staff had to be there all day, all those three days. So we had a number of staff that were willing to do a little bit of time at those events. And so we were able to cover, the National Guard was really looking for a lot of assistance and direction in providing this. They were both, they did testing both inside the armory, but they also had some drive-up capacity so they could test those people that wanted to stay in their cars. And, you know, we had, it went pretty smooth for the short notice. So unfortunately, I wish we would have had many more tested, but that's, that's how it went. So 855 to 875, those results go to the Mayo Clinic. That's the lab that was providing the, is going to provide the testing results. So we'll see kind of what the, what the outcome is of that, of the testing from that site. So we'll see how that goes. The testing continues for long-term care facilities and assisted living facilities in Clay County. That is happening also at their sites, and it's testing the staff, and it's also testing residents. Now, what Minnesota's doing is they're going to do a series of three tests. So they'll do an initial testing of everyone, and then seven to 14 laters, they come back and do a second testing, because the testing, of course, only shows what's happening that very day. And then the third time, they'll come again seven to 14 days later. So there'll be a series of three different tests in all of those assisted living and long-term care facilities. So we have one facility today. I think there's another one on Friday. So the National Guard is going to those sites and providing the testing. There's also testing on the North Dakota side. They have about three sites set up, and they have, we made the request to do our corporate congregate settings. They were not on the list with the assisted living and long-term care. So we made the request to include those because we do have some outbreaks in those congregate settings. Now, the governor's office of North Dakota agreed that we could have Minnesota staff from those facilities come over to their North Dakota sites and get tested. So that's very good. So that's going on today. So we sent that information out to all of our congregate care settings, and they can have staff go to the North Dakota sites and any of those three sites that are going to be doing the testing. We also sent that out specifically to those facilities when we did the mass testing this weekend, just so they would get some information. So we may have had some that did come over to the armory and get tested as well. So we wanted to provide every opportunity for those facilities to get tested. So that, that was good. Any questions on the testing or, you know, we should be hearing back. I believe it was about 48 hours to get the testing results back from the Mayo Clinic, so.
What kind of testing do they do in a long-term care? I mean, now at the Moore Armory, they're going to do one test. Now you say the long-term care, they're doing three tests.
Yes.
What's the difference between the two?
Well, it's, it's a setting with high-risk individuals, and we are fully aware across the state of Minnesota that, that those healthcare workers are really bringing it in. They're asymptomatic. They don't know that they have the virus that they're carrying, and they're bringing it into those facilities. So we want to stop the spread in those long-term care facilities because it is far more detrimental. Those, those individuals in those facilities are typically the ones that would be more critically ill because of their health conditions and their age. So what they're trying to do is try to catch those early with positive cases and then be able to deal with that. So if it's a positive staff individual that has no symptoms, then at least we can get that person out of the workforce.
Is it the same test that they're doing?
The same test.
Oh, they're just doing the same test three times.
That's correct. Yes, they're doing it just because you, that one test, it just gives you what is happening with you today. You can be positive in a few days after that test, so you might not show the virus initially. So we're just trying to protect those that are most vulnerable, and so that's why we're doing those congregate care settings.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
First off, you know, on behalf of our board, if you can tell your staff thank you for, I'm sure that was short notice and then on a holiday weekend to have to go over and do that, make sure you give our thanks to them for that. First, congregate care, are you including nursing homes and assisted living types? All those fall under that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I've had people ask me, you know, they didn't look at that as necessarily being nursing homes when they hear that term.
Sure.
So, but we're including that, all of those things?
That's right. And the congregate care also is, you know, some of the corporate foster care homes that have individuals as well. So yes, all of that.
And why, you know, what, what can we do to push antibody testing? You know, when we're, we're testing everybody and they, and they might, you know, and we're going to test them three times over the course of 21 days or whatever, or 28 days, whatever that is. And wouldn't it, wouldn't it be nice to be able to do that simple little blood test to see if they have the antibody?
Yeah, they're not, they're not pushing that out for many reasons. They're still trying to determine the efficacy of that, so they're still, that's, that's coming through the medical.
But wouldn't, but with more of that being done, wouldn't that help that study?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know enough about the antibody testing, other than they're saying that the, you know, the accuracy of that is also, they're unsure about that. So they don't want to do the mass antibody testing. It will be nice when they can do that, obviously, but at this point in time, they're not ready to do that mass testing in those facilities.
Thank you.
Yes. The other sheet I sent out, that, that is really the phases of the governor's stay-at-home order. So you can see the dates, and then he, he talks about each of the settings, so the social settings, critical business, non-critical business, the retail, restaurant, and bars. And then there's one on the back page. There's, there's four sides, personal services, and then he talks about gyms, entertainment, like bowling alleys. So it's very well laid out, outdoor, school buildings, childcare, youth programs, organized youth sports. So it gives you kind of an idea of what his order is. And then at the top, I know the print is very small, but it, it talks about when the stay-at-home order was initiated, and then phase one goes through June 1st, and then phase two begins June 1st, and then we don't have dates for phase three and phase four. So at least it gives you an idea of what he's talking about, what, what are the gatherings that he's looking at in regards to even like the, you know, the religious facilities, what kind of gatherings is he, is he mentioning when he talks about the phases? So that gives you at least a snapshot of, of his plan, and we know that will change.
So Kathy, what's his, what's his criteria from being able to move from phase two to phase three? Or do we have to wait to see what that is?
Right. He will, he will be announcing that to see what his criteria will be for that. But he's looking at the data and the numbers. He's still a big believer in, you know, we still have to manage that social distancing. We have examples from other states where they've, they've lessened that social distancing, and now they've experienced some outbreaks.
But has he said what he's looking for, what, what, what's going to be, what, what has to be met for him to do phase two?
You know, he hasn't given us a specific, what does he have to meet, but he is looking at hospitalizations, he's looking at the deaths, and then he's looking at the, the numbers of how they're ramping up in Minnesota. So he hasn't given us specifics. We're looking forward to when he makes that announcement about what he'll do after June 1st.
Kathy, is there any inclination if he will do a phase reopenings based on different areas of Minnesota? There are areas in Minnesota that are significantly different than what the metro is experiencing?
Right.
Has that been part of the conversation?
You know, it has been part of the conversation with the governor. I know that that's been brought forward with his team, whether they can make some differences, different decisions based on where you are in Minnesota. We haven't heard what he's going to do with that, but that would be, that would be something that's been brought to his attention.
What, what area do public meetings law, take this one for example, what area do we come under here? You know, what, what protocol do we have to follow? I mean, we're, right now, we're trying to be six feet apart.
Right.
Do we still have to maintain that distance?
Right now, you do.
Or is there something that says we're supposed to maintain it?
Right. And, and I consider this, you know, it's a critical business, so I, I would say that that's, yes, the six-foot distancing is still in play with that. The gatherings of 10 or less is still part of his plan. And, and then as you look down, when he talks about, so we're in phase, we're in phase one until June 1st, and then we go to phase two. So you see, even in social settings in phase two, beginning June 1st, it's still gatherings of 10 or less. He's mentioning that. Critical businesses are open. Right now, the way you're sitting, you're maintaining that six-foot distancing, so that's still pretty critical. The six-foot distancing, he's not lessening up on, and the gatherings of, of the, the numbers of people is still something that he's looking at. What, what are the numbers that can be, in, for instance, North Dakota, you know, loosened up their numbers of how many people could get together. In Minnesota, it's a bit different yet, but as Commissioner Mojo said, hopefully, there will be some different decisions made based on where you are in Minnesota, because it's not a one-size-fits-all in this state.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy, I can, I, I just read an article this morning, and I don't know if there's something that they're looking at in the state of Minnesota, but I saw an article in, that in California, there, there was, suicides are up 800% just during this pandemic period of one-month period. And I'm curious if we're paying attention to those types of things as public health in Minnesota as well. I, I think the, I think the number, you know, when you start talking about California, I think they were saying that number was extremely high.
Yes.
You know, it was in the thousands.
And that's, I know that's been, that's been concern across the country, because I know they've talked about that, watching people's mental health. We've talked about it a number of times on our press conferences that we have every week. We've talked about mental health and resources, particularly around here. We talk about, you know, First Link, 211, the Mobile Mental Crisis Team. So we are paying attention. We have some social workers on our task force or on our team as well. So we're doing what we can to get the information out, but yeah, that's, that's pretty serious.
And they're tying it, they're tying it to, a lot of it to lost work and
Sure.
all of those types of things.
Right. The, yeah, the stress of what that puts on, the burden of people losing their businesses, and
Yep.
it's tremendous. So yes, we, we've at least brought that to people's attention about maintaining your mental health, and that there are resources out there, so we hope people avail themselves to that. And that message has been passed on pretty regularly, so that's, that's unfortunate. Anyone have any questions that I haven't provided information on?
Quickly, in congregate care, I think our detox facility and jail, are they in that grouping?
They are not. They, they could avail themselves, though, to the testing.
Okay.
So at the, they were testing anyone that came through the armory testing this weekend, and then the testing in North Dakota as well. So they're not included in that testing.
And that's not a concern at this point?
It hasn't been. Our jail's been doing a very great job of managing with their screening and the way they have isolated their people. So they're doing a really good job. Okay.
All righty, thank you, Kathy, for the update.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'll go with Darren. Consideration to continue the AMC Human Resource Technical Assistance Program.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I'm coming to you for a decision on something that may or may not happen, so bear with me, please.
She says the same as COVID-19 thing, or?
No, it's, that, that has happened.
Okay.
So AMC has had a three-year contract with David Drowne Associates, and if that name rings a bell, that's the people that did our market study last year, to provide county human resource departments with a portable, portal to answer local, state, and federal human resources issues. The portal allows human resource departments to submit questions to DDA on matters relating to unions, compliance, laws, policies, discipline, employee relations, and many other human resource-related topics. Detailed and researched answers are normally returned within 24 hours, and it's currently no cost to the county. So what this program does is, for three years, the AMC has been contracting with these people, and then the counties within Minnesota can submit questions that they may have to these David Drowne Associates, and then within 24 hours, they come back with an answer for you. It's a, it's a very good asset to have for a human resources department. One of the things that it does do is probably offset some of the costs that we would be using for labor attorneys, which can be quite expensive, as you probably already know. And it's also very useful when new regulations and stuff come out, like the COVID-19, all the regulations and guidance and that. David Drowne Associates looks through all of that and then gives us kind of a summary of all the things that we have to be looking for, some of the things that we have to be changing. They've also allotted information on data practices, stuff, FMLA, you know, the emergency FMLA and the emergency paid sick leave, they were very forthcoming and a lot of information as far as that goes as well. Some stuff on the Affordable Care Act. So it's nice, it's a nice resource for human resources to have, to ask these type of questions that come up, you know, in everyday operations. And so what has happened is that three-year contract is up in December, and AMC does not have the funds at this point to continue the program. Like I said, it has been paid by AMC for the last three years, but now they're looking for the counties to pony up some of that money. They are planning on still contributing about $50,000 per year to offset this cost, but the total cost of the program is about $390,000 per year, and divided amongst 87 counties, you can see that it's, it's fairly expensive. There's a couple of things that AMC is requesting. The number one is, I would have taken this to the PIC earlier, but I just got this last week, and AMC would like a decision by June 1st on whether the county would be interested in funding a portion of this David Drowne, this Human Resources Technical Assistance Program. The cost that they quoted for each county in Minnesota would be $4,900 per year, and so that would be the request for 2021. The caveat to this is if they don't get enough counties to sign up, then they'll just discontinue the program. What they're calling for is at least 50 counties to sign up to make it so that they can actually pay for the program. If they get less than 50 counties that want to participate, then they won't continue the program. It takes about 70 of the counties to fully fund this program, and AMC has gone out for grants and stuff to offset some of these costs as well. So the cost to Clay County would be a little over $400 per month for 2021. So far, I have actually submitted questions nine times. Probably four or five of them would have probably gone to a labor attorney, based on, I had some FMLA questions, I've had some COVID-19 questions, union, some union questions, and like I said, this kind of offsets some of the labor, labor attorney costs as well. So that's kind of where we are at, at this point. It's, AMC is basically looking for counties to say, yes, we're interested in doing this, and we'll commit $4,900 next year to this program. If they don't, then probably the program will most likely go away. I don't think that an actual decision has to be made now, because it's going to be a difference if 70 counties sign up versus 50 counties, you know, that cost might fluctuate a little bit, but I would not say any more than $4,900 for next year would be the, the total cost of the county. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I just wanted to bring this to the board to make you aware of it, and also to give AMC their answer by June 1st on whether this program is worth continuing.
So if we answered the affirmative on this, is it a commitment for a year then? It doesn't go on any longer than that year? We can, we can see how it works for a year and then?
Correct, correct. The other thing they're trying to do is talk to David Drowne Associates to get a better price. $390,000 is, you know, that's pretty costly for, for the thing, but it also, it also has a website, so those questions that are put out by other counties, instead of us reinventing the work wheel all the time, we can go to this website. Right now, it has about 100, let's see, I think it has about 100, it has about 142 different topics on the website that, you know, if we have a question about discipline or union negotiations or something like that, we can go to the website, and maybe another county has already asked that question, so.
So when you've asked questions, now are they timely in getting back to you? Has it worked?
Yeah, actually, I've been extremely impressed with it, because within 24 hours, I have a well-researched document that comes back to me. So if I have, I can shoot off a half a paragraph question on an issue that we're having, and within 24 hours, and sometimes even less, I'll have, you know, a page and a half of rules, regulations, and what other counties have done in this instance. So it's, it's, the, the product that we get back is very well thought out and researched.
Mr. Chair. How many counties currently participate?
I don't have any.
And then my other question would be on that, is it 4,900 each county, or is it divided by population to determine what the contribution is?
Right now, AMC is just saying 4,900 per county. Now, I, I see your point where, you know, Hennepin County may be using it a lot more and have more people than Clay County, but they haven't based it on population at this point.
I just want to, you know, back to the old 4-H thing and your cost per use, if you're only
Yep.
using it nine times
Yep.
you're paying 4,900, is it really offset the cost? If you're saying you're avoiding labor, labor attorneys, and maybe that's one thing. My other question on that is, there any overlay in what we paid for the ongoing service with David Drowne's compared to what this would offer, or are those completely separate?
Those are completely separate.
My first thought is, you know, you're looking at $4,900. There's plus the $50,000 AMC's committing, that comes from us too.
True.
So it's going to cost us more than $4,900.
Yeah, but we've been paying that for three years now, so.
Okay.
I, I guess that's not something that you consider when you're paying your AMC bill.
I'm just also looking at $4,900. You can hire a lot of lawyers for that for $4,900 a year to get some of those answers.
Probably $300 an hour?
Yeah.
Well, you had nine questions. You said you had nine questions.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's a little deceiving, because I, I say I've physically submitted nine questions, but I have gotten a lot of information back. So like, probably every week, week and a half, I will get documents from David Drowne Associate on all the regulations and stuff that came out regarding COVID-19, regarding the Families First Response, Corona Response Act. So there's, there's more information coming to me than just my nine questions.
What type of people does David Drown have working for them that we don't have? I mean, we've got human resources directors, we've got county attorneys on our staff. What kind of people do they have that can give us better answers?
They basically have the same people. They have human resources professionals. I know of the one human resource lady that I've always had to talk to when we have issues here. She works for them as well. I'm sure they have some lawyers on staff as well. There's nothing that they have that we don't have, but it's the matter of the time that is spent looking up all of this stuff, the ability to use other counties' information to help make our decisions as well. So, you know, if we don't renew this, is this going to be some crisis that we won't be able to handle? No, because there's other sources out there that can be looked at. It's just a matter that this is kind of a nice package that you can go to and say, hey, I have this question, and you get all of this information back. So, you know, I see that, well, why don't we just do everything with them? It's just something that, it's an asset that we use, just like anything else.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A couple of concerns that I have with trying to reach the numbers that they want to get to. My past experiences with, and maybe these guys that are currently on the MRC Board, we have some really small counties out there. The significant portion, numbers of our counties are very small. They don't have the 500 employees that Clay County has. And this again is where one size fits all in terms of price isn't going to fly. And I think you're going to see an awful lot of smaller counties bailing out on this. Your nine calls, based on my real simple math here, is each result you got was worth about $544, you know, for nine inquiries. It just, it... I don't know why we can't, as a group of 87 counties, strengthen numbers in dealing with this firm.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking at $390,000.
Yeah.
AMC can't hire someone for $390, or some county can hire someone for $390,000 to answer some of these questions?
Yeah, and I agree that $390,000 seems like a large price for that. I know that they are in negotiations to get that price down, that might help, but I also understand Commissioner Campbell's concern that, and I think that's AMC's concern too, is you take some of these very small counties.
They're not going to do it.
And like some of these other ones.
They're not going to do it.
And that's a lot more information for them, a lot more cost to them.
Well, they're simply not going to do it, and that $4,900 is going to become something different.
Right.
To keep it. That's my concern.
I just look at AMC.
And $4,900 just comes from what AMC is telling us. I don't know what they're doing.
I mean, I look at, we're a member of AMC, that's costing us some money. You know, now they say, well, if you've got some questions concerning this, we've got to hire another firm to answer those questions. You know, so we already hired you to do the answer to the questions, so. But I mean, it's just like the centers of the dues, but if you've got some questions, it's going to ask you more. It's going to cost you more.
Right.
If you're looking from guidance, my personal opinions, I'm hesitant to commit Clay County to that. There are too many revolving doors in that, and I also think that AMC would probably be better served by creating that, like Commissioner Campbell said, in-house. $390,000 can go a long way in terms of that.
Okay. I can pass on those comments to AMC and see where they go. I mean, like I said at the beginning, this may even be a non-issue, because they might not get the 50 counties to participate, and then it's probably a dead issue.
That will surprise me if they do, but.
Or I can also let them know that maybe it should be citizen-based, and not just $4,900.
I mean, we are a large, you know, there's 87 counties in Minnesota, and we're not a large county, but in terms of some of these counties, we are.
We're the 11th largest.
So we are a larger county, and so we're saying, whoa, this doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, any other questions for me? I'll relay those thoughts to AMC.
Well, I guess before we go, we can check this out. Is there any motion to this thing?
Well, I, you know, just to follow up again, I, you know, I think if, to me, we're borderline whether we, for the amount of activity or the amount of usage you get out of it, whether it isn't something, we can't just self-fund with that $4,900. You know, in terms of if we had to go out and research, I mean.
Right.
You know, until, I just.
I mean, I look at their good service, but it's a cost of service.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that really the only true cost savings would be, in the past, it's been free, and certainly if it wasn't there, I probably would have gone to the labor attorney, who would have been, you know, $250 bucks an hour, $220 bucks an hour.
Mr. Chairman, AMC is supposed to be a research area for us. And how many other things are we going to end up having different agencies go to AMC and say they want to have additional funding outside of this, and I just?
Okay, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion on this or not. If not, they'll just pass. Any more discussion? Not, we'll just pass on this.
Okay, and I'll let your wishes be known. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go into a preliminary budget discussion. Steve, take us through that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's hard to believe we're at this portion of the year again, but here we are. Before you, this morning, you have a proposed 2021 budget timeline for your consideration. At the end of this conversation, we'd hope to have a recommendation to adopt this plan. Again, just kind of taking a look over this COVID pandemic has certainly provided a level of uncertainty with budget planning for us this year, along with the legislature also not, we're looking at a special session again, so there's certainly some challenges that we're looking at. So right now, Darren has provided Lori with all of the initial budget information. We would be looking to set the parameters of the guidelines, timelines today. On Friday, Lori is anticipating sending out all of the budget packets to our departments for their preparation evaluation for 2021, with the plan of having those turned in to her office by the 19th. Right around July 3rd, then, they would be compiled and forwarded on to me, and Lori and I will begin having meetings with each of the department heads to go line by line through each of their budgets. With the idea that, starting early July and through August, we'll have budget presentations from our departments on their potential budgets. We are looking at, of course, by statute, we have to set our preliminary levy by October 1st. We would be proposing that we look at setting that September 22nd. That would give us September 29th, if there's any additional tweaks that we would like to make before the October 1st deadline. Right now, we're looking at a truth in taxation, date of December 1st, with the board meeting at 5:00 and truth in taxation at 6:00, with the adoption of a final levy for the budget year 2021, either December 8th or December 15th. So with that, I yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
If nobody else will speak, I certainly will. I, as you communicate with the department heads, I think it's critical to let them know that with this pandemic, there's an awful lot of uncertainties that are on us and could be on us throughout the remainder of the year, whether it's increased expenditures due to it, or lack of revenues. And so I'm a little bit concerned that maybe within your original communication to them that they should be told to keep that in mind, that when they put forward a budget, that we might be under some, you know, some really... We don't know yet, and it could become serious. We don't know yet. We've seen now some state numbers that are going to be a massive, what was going to be a surplus is a huge deficit now. Is it, what's the latest? Is it $4 billion? Is that $4 billion? And, you know, I think you look at that, and you look at our county program aid, and is that going to be a result of, or a consequence of that deficit? We don't know yet. And so I just urge us to be taking a look at this as a important... You know, we've got an awful lot of our citizens who are unemployed right now, too, and they also pay the taxes, the real estate taxes, and we need to be keeping that in mind, so. That, Mr. Chair, that's my comments for this.
I'll echo that a little bit. I know that we'll talk more in your administrative update of what AMC is doing, but I am really concerned at the tax burden on businesses especially, that if you're looking at the earnings phase in, you're going to still have a lot of time before they can start making some money, and I don't know if the way we've gone about business will be feasible this year. I'm significantly concerned about that, and would really appreciate cutting anything that we can.
I guess I too, with extra concern about all the business places, you know, that have been closed. You know, we're still going to ask them to pay the same taxes, you know.
That's right.
We're not reducing their tax because they didn't make any money, you know, and it's really not their fault. And I think we've got to do, really look at our budget this year. Be nice to come in at a zero, but I don't know if that's possible or not, but. Okay, any further comments? If not, we'll go with this timeline that we've got set up here for our budget, and proceed with that.
Could I get a motion on that, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Grant.
Second.
Second by Kevin to adopt the budget preparation for 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
I don't know, Mr. Chair, do you want to deal with the agenda addition that Mr. Campbell brought up now, or would you like to speak on that after we're done?
We can do it in your update, Steve.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into the reappointment. Some planning commission members, Matt Jacobson taking care of that.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners.
Morning.
So today, I have before you, at their May 19th meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends the appointment of Ezra Behar to the Planning Commission. So Amos Behar was on the Planning Commission since 2011, and so his third term expired last month, and looking to fill his position that the Planning Commission has recommended, Ezra. And Ezra is here today. If you have any questions for him at all, we can bring him up.
Why don't you come up, Ezra?
Are these three-year terms?
Yes, they're three-year terms.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think it's also important to note the geographical area that Amos had filled now, that Ezra would be filling, right, is the broader?
Yep, it's the unincorporated rural, and I think most importantly, the eastern part of Clay County. And so Amos served as an unincorporated rural member, and Ezra would be doing the same, going kind of that same goal.
I would also like to comment too, that I think it's important to have somebody who, on that planning commission, who's involved with animals, and I think that's extremely important. In my time on the board, some of the most, at times, there's some of the most controversial issues have been regarding animal issues, and if we don't have somebody on that planning commission that can help represent that industry, I think we'd be making a big mistake. So I'm certainly going to support this recommendation, so.
Well, I too have worked with Ezra for a few years already, and now you're on the township board, I think Gooseberry Township Board, you know, and he's been very, I think, very good member there on the township board, and I too would support him for this position, because my deals with him have been very good.
So, Mr. Chair, I will say that Ezra also currently serves on the Board of Adjustment, has been for a couple of years now.
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
So how will that work if we, when we appoint Ezra? Then will he continue to hold that Board of Adjustment spot, or does Bill Davis now have that as chair?
So Bill Davis now has that as chair.
So Ezra won't be serving on the Board of Adjustment anymore?
I did. I checked with our termies, and there is not a conflict for him to serve on both.
We've had that in the past.
It would, yes.
Right, I just want to, for clarification for the people.
Yep, so it would ultimately be up to, if you do appoint Ezra, it would ultimately be up to him.
Which I think is important, and one, I think we've had trouble finding people willing to serve in the Board of Adjustment, and I think that the issues that you've seen Ezra being on that will be beneficial going forward. Ezra, do you want to introduce yourself quick to the?
Ezra Behar from Gooseberry Township. I've met most of you before, when I was here two and a half, I think two and a half years ago roughly, to be appointed on the Board of Adjustment, and I've really enjoyed my time on the Board of Adjustment. Very good learning, the four or five of us that sit on that board, very good group of people to work with, and I'd be honored to be on the planning board next. And if I could hold both chairs, both seats, I would enjoy doing that.
Well, since I've been on the Planning Commission, serving there, and I've seen you active as a township member, a citizen, but most importantly, a grower and producer, I would make a motion to appoint Ezra to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, to appoint Ezra to the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much for helping us out on that. Okay, you got another one to?
Yeah, I have the reappointment of Andrea Coltsor to the Planning Commission to serve. This would be her third term, so she's been on the Planning Commission since 2014, and also serves in that rural capacity, or rural role as well. And I would say that she has been a fantastic member of the Planning Commission, really valuable asset to the county in that role.
I will also say that Andrea has a good working relationship with the townships, and quite frequently voices their stance on issues, which I think is important to have those rural townships represented as well. I will also make a motion to reappoint Andrea to her third and final term on the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to appoint Andrea by Jenny, and a second by Grant. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to note, I believe that she also served on the Planning Commission earlier on too, and then I think she had termed out or some, took a break for some reason, but so she's got quite the experience of being on there. I think it goes, I think it goes earlier than 2011.
And it's good to see some of our county people participating in these programs. Thank you to Andrea for doing that, and to Ezra. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for taking care of that, Matt. With that, we'll go into our Highway Department. Dave Overo, Justin. Got a couple of bits to open on the County State 8, Highway 8, and also the three bridge replacements.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got two bit openings today. First bit opening is on County Road.
We've got two bid openings today. First bid opening is on County Road Eight, starts on the west side by the railroad tracks by the little city of Rust Ed, and goes about four and a half miles to the east to County Road Eleven. It's a roadway that has, doesn't have, doesn't see a terrible amount of traffic, and as such, it's kind of held in place for a long time. I think the last time the county did work on it was maybe in the early seventies. So it's a project that we, if you remember, we did accelerate this year into our five-year construction program. We started incurring a lot of maintenance, additional maintenance costs, and it's just one of those roadways where if it's gonna start having some major issues, weekends or nights with the farm and, and heavy traffic on it, it started becoming kind of a thorn in our side a little bit. There's a lot of projects just like this one, this FDR Full Depth Reclamation with an asphalt overlay right in our District Four. So we've reached out to the other counties, we've got abstracts and things, and we did a little bit of homework. And anyway, we decided to push this one forward. We got three electronic bidders and we've got one paper bidder, so we will proceed on that one. I'll go through the, the engineer's estimate for the project is, and our best guess with this one was $2,353,350.30. So that's where we thought we're, everything that we'd seen, we're hoping would come in. The one thing that we do always check for is a bid bond in the amount of 5%. And on the electronic side, those, those things have to be met, otherwise it will not show as a complete bid. And then we do have three addendums on the project, and we have to acknowledge all three of those as well. So we, we'll be doing that, and then we'll, we'll kind of dig into it here.
Mr. Chair, briefly before we start opening these, we had talked early in the process about completion date for this project in lieu of sugar beet harvest. And discussing with our engineer, there've been some problems in terms of abbreviated construction period. And last week, he reached out to me to talk a little bit about extending the date of completion a little bit, to still allow for this to be done before the main campaign for sugar beets.
Correct.
But it may not be done before pre-haul. And that, we talked to Mark Anderson from the Watershed District, who's also a farmer, but we also, he then talked to American Crystal to let them know that that could be a possibility. They maintain that that's something that they could work around. It's not ideal, but we wanted to make sure that our project has done quality work without having to rush anything. For the board's knowledge, that was a conversation that was had.
Right. The, the timeline initially, we were looking at, I think it was like the 26th or 28th of August.
The 28th of the new completion date would be September 26.
We started getting some calls from contractors, and one in particular said he couldn't bid it the way it was. And we had heard that there was rumor, one additional contractor was, was bidding in liquidated damages into his bid just to get it done. Well, those are things that we don't want to hear. So we reached out to Commissioner Mojo as well as Mark Anderson, and, and we all felt like the risk of maybe getting real bad bids and having to, you know, continue with this road maybe for an additional season was not worth it. So we did extend four weeks onto the project and just to make sure we can get bids and get this thing constructed and stay within our budget.
Okay.
All right.
Let's go on to the bid opening.
First electronic bid is Central Specialties from Alexandria. They do have a complete bid here, which would be the 5% bid bond as well as acknowledging the three addendums. And their bid is $2,384,832.42. $2,384,832.42. Our next bidder is Mark Sand and Gravel. I believe they're in the Fergus Falls area. They do have a complete bid in their electronic bid here. And their bid price is $2,360,503.32. And our last electronic bid is RJ Zavro and Sons out of East Grand Forks. They do have an approved completed bid, and their bid is $2,135,852.70. $2,135,852.70. And then we do got the one paper copy here, and I believe it's from Border States Construction out of Fargo.
The bid acknowledged with all three addendums.
Here's the bid bond in 5%. Yeah, they were all, all nice and close, which kind of gives an idea that there wasn't anything really hunky going on with our project. But Border States bid is $2,252,222.72. I guess I would recommend that we conditionally approve these, contingently based on no errors, no, nothing wrong with their bids. It looks like RJ Zavro and Sons is the apparent little better at this time.
Move approval.
Okay, we got a motion by, excuse me, Kevin, second by Jim, to approve RJ Zavro. Can we review the bits? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, I'll take the next one.
So our next bid is for three concrete box culverts. This is kind of a cooperative project with the Buffalo Red River Watershed. We've got two of the, two of the locations, one on a county road, one on a township road, is right alongside County Road Eight. In fact, it's right in the intersection there, as I believe it's Ditch Eleven that runs along the south side of the road. The third project or third location is on Third Street. It's on a township road as well, and that one is on the Convent Road. It's the second to the last road that goes south as you get closer to the Red River there. It's the one that I believe has, there's a sign that says Yuppie Puppy right there. So we're, there's a double line of round pipe there. They're gonna be replaced with a box culvert. We got a lot of interest on this one. All electronic bids, is that correct?
Seven of them.
Okay, we have seven electronic bids. So same procedure. If it does say that they have a complete bid, that means that they've got a 5% bid bond. Was there addendums on this one?
Just.
One addendum on this one as well. So our first bidder is Central Specialties out of Alexandria. They do have a complete bid. And maybe I'll, do you want to read out the engineer's estimate?
Yeah.
If you have that handy.
Yeah, just a reminder that we, oh, excuse me.
We have it on here.
The engineer's estimate was $504,126.
Okay. Just to mention, thank you.
Bidder from Central Specialties is $303,990.00. $303,990.00. Our next bidder is Gladen Construction from La Porte, Minnesota. They do have a complete bid, and their bid is $291,938.00.
Excuse me, who's that from?
Gladen, Gladen Construction.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yep. $291,938.00. Our next bidder is Hool Excavation LLC. They do have a complete bid, and their bid is $274,456.00. $274,456.00. Our next bidder is Midwest Contracting LLC. We did a lot of work with them in the past. They do have a complete bid here, and their bid is $268,375.00. $268,375.00. Our next bidder is Landwear Construction. They've already got pipes with us this year. They do have a complete bid here, and their bid is $244,987.75. $244,987.75. And our second to the last bidder is Riley Brothers Construction out of Morris, Minnesota. They do have a complete bid, and their bid is $239,035.90. $239,035.90. And our last bidder is Dennis Drews Incorporated out of Fraser. They did a great job on County Road Nine for us several years ago, and they're, they do have a complete bid, and it's $209,710.00. We did not put the engineer's estimate together. It was a, that was a project that Houston Engineering put together, and.
That was my first question.
Yeah. He knew what the question was gonna be.
There'll be a kind of a combination of, is there bridge bond funds? So it's very small.
No.
No bridge bonds, right.
Just town bridge funds and state aid.
That's right. So there, so there's no cost to the township. The Watershed District will pay a share. The Town Bridge Funds will pay everything that, that is eligible for Town Bridge Funds, and then County State Aid Funds for our half of the half on the, the county one. So I believe it looks like we have got some good bids here. But there again, we'd like to maybe contingentally approve based on fully reviewing these, making sure there's no errors.
Well, I will definitely make a approval to make a motion to approve these.
Okay, we got a motion to approve these bids, but I see we also have the Buffalo Watershed that has to approve these bids also.
Right, exactly. Yep, contingent on the watershed approval as well.
I want to reflect that.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, to approve the bits.
Will they have this for their meeting tonight?
I believe they will have this practice.
Okay.
We'll be back to the office.
Thank you.
Okay, contingent on the Buffalo Red River Watershed approval of the bits. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have highway tracking later today?
Right.
Yes, okay. Rhonda, how long were you group there? Quinn and Michelle and Amy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're back. Okay, well, we are back today. We've been before you quite a bit the last few months on child protection issues. We, if you recall, in March, we went to the Personnel Issues Committee to talk with you about our ongoing child protection services, focusing on our auto home placements and our high caseload demands. At that time, we, our overall goal has been to get our caseloads down to around that eight mark based on the intensity of the services we're providing. We, at that time, in order to achieve that, we requested two social workers and one case aide to help us with that. We went through the Personnel Issues Committee and came to board, and we did get approval to hire one social worker and that case aide position. So we've moved forward with that and have hired those two positions. Since that time, the state provided us information about some opioid response account grant funds that are being allocated to counties in Minnesota specifically to address child protection services for families that are in our system due to drug abuse. And we knew that these funds were, were allocated the last legislative session. There's quite a formula for these funds, and it's all dependent on fees collected by the state for its registration fees assessed to boards of pharmacy and also licensing fees for distribution of opioids in the state. And so the, the state has come up with an allocation formula for those funds. It's revenue put into the state treasury, and then they allocate these funds based on a formula. The piece that's being allocated to county child protection agencies, I did, I'm not sure if it did go out in your board pack at the actual bulletin, which listed all the counties and, and what the allocations would be for the counties. The important piece to note is that these funds that are noted in this bulletin are for six months. So if the formula stays the same and everything else stays the same in terms of the amount of funds that they collect, you would anticipate that our allocation would be double what it is for this six months. So that's just important to note going forward. So with these funds, the bulletin outlines how these funds can be spent. We have to submit a plan to DHS for them to approve. We have to assure that the funds are not supplanting anything that we're currently funding or doing in the service area. And in June, sometime in June, probably the end of June, we will get a preliminary allocation for the next calendar year 2021. So we, we haven't received that information yet. So we'd like to, we thought this would be a good opportunity to request that second social work position. For six months, that position would cost about $41,394, assuming the, the position started July 1. That's a little high because we assumed six months of insurance, which we know that that wouldn't, it wouldn't be six months insurance. And so we would request, the, the funds primarily be used for that purpose. The additional funds for this year, we would include in the plan some training. The, the bulletin does outline that we can use some of the funds for training. We actually would use that for some of our new staffs. We think that building in that training capacity, travel, some of our supervised visit expenses, drug screens would accommodate for the rest of the funds allocated for this year.
I know, you gotta submit a plan, tell them what you're gonna use the funds for.
Yes.
Are we assured that we're gonna get the funds too? I mean, I realize we gotta use the funds for the right thing, but are they gonna keep giving funds? How assured are we of the funds, knowing in budget restrictions?
Yeah. Well, these, these funds are based on revenues the state has already collected, and it's in statute as to how those funds are to be allocated. So for as sure as I am, I guess.
I mean, we got six months assurance. I mean, what about next year? What are we gonna tell those employees next year?
Right.
Do we know anything about next year?
Right. Well, it's intended that these fees would continue, and I did actually print off the statute that talks about these fees and how they're collected and how they're distributed, if you'd like to see it. It, it does talk about in here, the state has some litigation out there in terms of the opioid issues, which you may have heard of in months past. And they do talk in here about if the state does receive a settlement in terms of that litigation, then the fees assessed in this statute for the boards of pharmacy would be reduced. However, they're anticipating, it talks in here about a total sum of $250 million, and if that occurs, then they'll reduce some of the fees. But the, the way they've allocated the funds to the different areas would still continue. So, you know, with so much of our grants and our earnings, you know, it's difficult to predict. I'm not hearing any unallotments in human services at this point, but.
Well, I'm sure it is difficult for you to determine that, I guess.
Yeah.
I was just wondering whether you had, what your feelings are towards another position. I mean, if you feel it's okay.
Well, the thing about our area is that, as you know, unfortunately, our turnover in child protective services is just one of those things that's inevitable over time. So should we lose these funds, the board would have an opportunity to not fill a position if you were so inclined to do that. I, that's the best answer I guess I could give in terms of.
Well, we discussed this at PIC, and we, we felt that we should move ahead with it since we've got funds available for it, you know. So, I mean, those are just the feelings of the PIC committee. And from that, any questions?
We had a lot of discussion at PIC about this last week, and this is the position that you requested earlier that we asked you to hold off on because of the funding issues. But they found a way to, to make this work, and, yeah, we did support it at PIC. I think it's a good plan. And, and of course, if the funding were to change and run out, we'd have, we'd have, the board would have to deal with that at the time, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
When, when did we approve the first social worker? You came to us with two, when, when was it that?
Actually, it was three decisions.
Couple months ago, wasn't it?
Well, there was two social workers and one other position.
Yeah, it was two social workers and one. Yeah, it was two social workers and a case aid. So let's see, yes, March, I wanna say twenty-four. Let me see if I've got.
How how much, by hiring that one, how much should that reduce the caseload?
Um.
That's on the last page.
Yeah, let's see. Can you guys speak to that? We haven't really, you're still passing on new cases.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we had to do to kind of adapt was the assessors in my unit were keeping the case management cases just to kind of stop the overflow so we could have case managers be a little stable. So we had several cases that kind of also piled up on the assessor's plate that when we hired that new case manager, we were able to get those cases off of assessors who are also doing investigations and assessments to kind of free them up to go back to doing just their job. Let alone, we had a couple of other staff as well. I have one of the intake workers that takes reports. She had a couple of case management cases. She was a part of case manager. We had a worker in a different unit who used to do child protection case management. He took on a couple of cases. We were able to get those cases off of their caseloads so they could go back to their other, their regular work. We were able to get those pieces off and then we're now in the process of transferring all those cases over. So that helped alleviate some of that overflow, but it didn't get the total number of caseloads down to that eight, which is over.
The the first position that we approved or the requested approval in March, would that position have qualified for the sixty-four thousand dollars?
Yes. Well, it would have if it was July or after. Now.
Okay.
However, I'm going to connect with DHS about, because the position that we started wouldn't have been a full year. So it's possible they would approve, so for next year's budget for 2021, now that we have a position for a full year, the difference that they may approve under some of these funds as well. So we could look at that for 2021.
And then and then going to your comment and even based on what Commissioner Wayland said about the PIC committee's recommendation, I, unfortunately, I think it's important that we let these people know that this is basically a grant-funded position. And, you know, to protect the board, if if our, you know, we're caught in a kind of a catch-22 here because the the services are needed. But yet, I'm always concerned about what the state of Minnesota might do to us in terms of passing the buck down to us. And I'm I'm gonna support the request, but I just, I just think that, and I've said this before, all of, anytime that we hire somebody who's whose position is directly tied to funding from the state and federal government, if that goes away, at what level do we keep putting it on to local taxpayers if the state and federal government doesn't do it? That's that's a concern that I have.
I would just add as well, the the one that you approved in March and this one are also revenue generating positions based on the the eligibility of the kids that they serve. So the formula for that revenue also has to do with our workforce and caseload size. So the lower we can get our caseloads in child welfare, the better the formula works out in terms of revenue generating. So that is not considered into this piece at all. So hopefully into 2021, when we get our workforce a little more stable and these these caseloads a little bit more distributed, we will see some increase in that earned revenue.
To speak to at least next year, 2020, we know that there will be an allocation for 2020. We won't know until the end of June, but just for the board's reference. So the allocation that the sixty-four thousand that we're getting is based on thirty-two placements that were specific to drug use or opioid use. I ran the numbers for 2019 and we had forty-seven. So we had even more. So going by that logic, I would hope that the allocation for 2020 would be even greater than it is for.
Twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, for twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chair. Can you or staff talk a little bit about since the COVID pandemic? Are you seeing increases in child protection that is, that you wouldn't normally see? I mean, you you know kind of typically what your trends are. Are your numbers trending higher since this issue?
Our total reports have gone up. Huge part of that is there's no school.
Right.
The overwhelming majority of our reports come from school staff and school professionals. That being the case, our overall numbers haven't really decreased that much, at least in terms of investigations and assessments. Since the last time we were here, we had five new placements come in. That's not five kids, that's five families. We had a sibling group of five, a sibling group of four in March families, which are quite difficult to manage. So I don't know that I would attribute those specific to the COVID crisis. But we continue to get, continue to get reports. It's not any, I wouldn't say it's any worse than what it typically is, it's just remain constant.
I'll make the motion to approve the request. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Just one question. When you say you get a family of five or something, is that, you consider that five new cases then?
It's it's one case in how we document, but it would be five children. So I mean, that absolute complexity of, you know, what Amy's dealing with and kind of the breakdown that we that we provided, you know, if there's, if you have eight cases and all eight of them are placement cases, which means there's additional requirements on the case manager, additional case in court. Doesn't mean that it's just eight kids. You could have eight families and multiple different sibling groups, you know. I think we had several large sibling groups. So even though you have a small number of caseload, number of cases, actually you have twenty, twenty-five children that you're working with.
Do you have something you wanna say, Amy?
No, I would just agree that even since we've gotten these new case managers on, placements have continued to come in. So it's not like things are backing down, just less reports, but we're still getting kids and having to go out on things in COVID.
Shelley, you got.
I feel I did a good job of covering it up.
Okay, very good. Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve this caseload position. Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that would go to committee reports. Jenny, you wanna start us out today?
Thank you. Last week I had a webinar with AMC Session Recap for Environment and Natural Resources. There's a pretty good document that's gone to all of us from AMC recapping the different policy groups. So I won't go into that. I had a technical difficulty, so I couldn't access the county, the planning commission. They did have the two items that we acted on today. There was a application for a conditional use of our weed park that was denied. That had been tabled for a prior meeting. I had a Castlay Food Partners meeting. We talked about food access in terms of local growers and meat availability. Continue to do more research on that. I had a MetroCog Executive Committee. We acted on the 2021 budget and approved it for recommendation to the main policy board. The next day, we have the MetroCog Policy Board, really good updates on the Howie ten seventy-five corridor. It's a study that's open for comment currently. And then I took part in the Buffalo Red River Watershed HR Ad hoc Advisory Committee. We discussed their intentions going forward now that their administrator has retired in terms of, they have an interim director administrator hired and they're looking to hire the positions in-house. And so we talked about the pluses and minuses of that. They, I think we'll talk about it at their meeting tonight. They were gonna do some more research on different areas, but that concludes my reports.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin?
The only meeting that I had last week was Commissioner Wayland and I and Steve met with Rhonda Porter regarding some how, potential housing issues coming, that's gonna be coming before the board. I guess I'll just leave it at that. It was not an official committee meeting, but, oh, and then this morning I did, for a few minutes, I was able to attend via phone the Executive Committee, Executive Group for the Diversion Authority. And and before I got off, the, they were giving some updates regarding the sales tax collections in Fargo and Cass County. And there doesn't seem, they're down a little bit, but it doesn't seem to be, to this point, a real drastic change that could have major impacts on on the financial plan for for the project, so. And now with things opening back up, they're thinking that it's gonna probably be okay, so that's that's all I have.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, I participated in the COVID nineteen press conference, weekly event, and that is my report.
And see, I had PIC, we've gone over that. We did have some more discussion about our reopening plan for the county. And I had a EDC Executive Committee meeting and pretty much discussions on funding and budgets and what the future looks like, so that was it for me.
Okay, I had the the PIC meeting, which, excuse me, which we've already covered during the meeting. And I also had the Historical Society meeting on Wednesday, which was held held virtually. And again, not much, we had one big thing that we discussed was the lighting contract. They're gonna redo the lights in the Empole Center and that was discussed. And also, we discussed reopening criteria, how it's gonna proceed and stuff like that. You know, what the, what type of issues have been involved in reopening the Historical Society. That was my meeting. So I'm gonna go to you, Steve, with the reports and the update on that other item we had.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the PIC meeting that's been covered and also the housing issue meeting with Commissioner Campbell and Wayland. Wednesday morning, the DMV opened and I went out to kind of see how that process worked. Again, our focus on that, the DMV is is looking at the renewals for the first that are due in the next thirty days. Business, business was brisk. We, I think they reported there probably to be about a two to three hour waiting period for most, most days last week. We did, we do have an Acuity app, which helps with citizens' notifications. Right now, again, we're having our citizens come up to the door, check in with their with their needs and to get the information. As long as they have a phone, the Acuity app, our staff are able to contact them and let them know that it's their turn to come in. And so we certainly appreciate our citizens' patience as we get back open. The state is currently not doing any testing for driver's license. It's made a little bit of a challenge. Lori's been working with the state. Alexandria, Douglas County and Becker County have opened their licensing division. So the challenge that we have is not only are we having people who are trying to get renewed, but we're having citizens from other counties that are driving here because their DMVs aren't open, but their testing is open. And so that's, that's added to some of the additional additional weight.
Do you know, excuse me, do you know whether, there's supposed to be a third party type of thing that where, some of the people I think that do driver's training could be a certified tester, is that, do you know anything?
I don't know. I have heard that, but I I don't have an answer as far as if that's something that they're able to do at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We we did roll out a Real ID and Enhanced ID, establishing reservations. We're piloting that right now. As of last week, all of the, we were, we had reservations through tomorrow. And again, I popped out there on Friday again and continued to be extremely steady. On the twenty-first, I met with Gabe Tweaton. We discussed reimbursements specifically with the Federal Care Act dollars. Should the legislature appropriate those in a special session or should they have one? And we just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything nor were we double dipping through through the different reimbursement options. That morning, we had management. We we talked about how the opening had gone from Monday through Thursday. Again, we we saw some pretty big interest in land records. Stayed fairly busy. Vitals and marriage certificates were out, building permits had a great deal of action. And we've also, we also spoke on the 2020 budget and the 2021 budget that Commissioner Campbell discussed earlier. On the twenty-first, that afternoon, I participated in a regional administrators meeting. We discussed different challenges that the counties are going through. And and talked about some of the different things that they're focusing on. That afternoon, I participated in the AMC webinar. Part of that webinar was I presented on our reopening policy to the group. I think they said there was about a hundred, a hundred commissioners or so on that webinar. And so that that went well. See, on Friday, I met with the regional city county managers to talk about the ongoing issues within our region, mostly pertaining to COVID. And then on the afternoon, I met with Darren on a series of HR issues. Just a quick few things, the asphalt, the final phase of the asphalt project is going to be completed back here in the south, southwest corner of the of the courthouse. The cones should be going up on Wednesday. It'll take about two days to get completed and we'll have access back to that area again on June first. I've been having an ongoing dialogue with Shelley Jeffers in relations to our to our openings. The courts, the courts right now are not anticipating having any jury trials until July sixth. There are five different pilot counties that are going on right now where they're trying to identify some of the challenges that COVID is gonna have with jury rooms, jury boxes, those types of things. The cleaning in between, in between hearings, who is allowed to, going to be attending those. With with also with the September first, there won't be any any civil trials until then. And so we'll continue to work. She's been working with Joe and looking at the different needs that they may have. We may need to commandeer Meeting Room B on Tuesdays moving forward in order to to have the additional space for juries as they as they go. But I'll keep the board updated on that. Lastly, the the item that Commissioner Campbell brought up earlier today is certainly the COVID, COVID pandemic has a huge impact on our citizens and certainly our businesses. They've shown a great deal of patience, I think, as we, as we move through, move through this process. And I think with the new executive order moving into the next phase, I think there was certainly a hope from our businesses that we were going to see an opening with with fewer limitations. And certainly, when the limitations came out that that there were, that are going to be brought forward on June first, there's certainly a great deal of frustration. I think that a number of you received calls, not only from citizens, but but the business community. And so part of the discussion that that we began to hear certain things out throughout the state of Minnesota that there was going to be businesses that were going to potentially defy the order and open up immediately or not follow some of the percentage ramifications or settings that they had set up. And so we had a, had a number of discussions over the last week and looking into that. When I was on my administrator call, there was about twenty administrators that that were on that call. And certainly, most of them expressed very similar frustrations to what this board has expressed. And then having said that, none of the counties that that we talked to on the call that day had anticipated providing any sort of resolution defying the governor's order. Julie Rang provided some guidance to the county. There certainly AMC has been working on having some, having some insight to provide to all of our eighty-seven counties about how to best deal with this. At this point, they they don't have the document ready, but Julie did say that on Friday that there, AMC does not support defying any executive order. And so that was a focus that we had. I spoke with Brian. I think one of the, one of the biggest concerns that that both AMC and Brian expressed are liability issues. If we were to, if this board were to make any sort of resolution stating that we would support opening, there would be some liability concerns that we would have. And I know Brian wants to.
The idea that if we don't like something that we've seen from the governor, that potentially if the board was to come out and say that they disagree with some things, that maybe they even want a collective, a letter to come from the board or come from Steve, sent to the governor, I think that's something that could happen. But the idea that, I would say, seeing what I heard, what I saw from Becker County, I guess at a minimum, it caused me to be taken aback a little bit, if not ultimately alarmed, with the discussion that they would advocate not respecting the rule of law and advocating or putting out a resolution that they would not follow the governor's orders. I think that's very problematic. I think it sets up the potential for liability if the board comes out and says, we're okay if you don't follow the governor's orders, and whatever happens, happens. And then, if cases of COVID were to come in, or they could trace those to restaurants that weren't following that, and the board had gone on record saying they're okay with that, I think that potentially is problematic. And I guess just overall, I mean, this board is responsible often for putting out resolutions, putting out orders, or we do different statutory requirements, those types of things, and follow those. I think it'd be very difficult for, I guess, the moral majority to come out and say, if somebody says, well, I'm not going to follow that, just like when the county board said, we're not going to follow the governor's order. I think that's, it would be a very difficult thing to answer back to. So, I was fairly alarmed to see what Becker County would potentially come out with or try to potentially pass a resolution that was stating that they would not follow the governor's order. I think we all have concerns about the issues for businesses in Clay County and the fact that we are a pro-business county and want them to get back on track as soon as possible. And again, I think there's things that could be done, or a letter, or things that could be worded here without ultimately passing a resolution. I think that would be extremely problematic.
Mr. Chair, I think that it's important to note that over the last few weeks, I've been receiving an increasing amount of calls from business owners and citizens significantly concerned. My intent for forwarding those concerns is not to try to trump our governor in any way. It's similar to what we do with townships and the county in terms of ordinances. A township can have a rule that is stricter than the county, but not less than. And so, my concern really revolves around the fact that we are a border county that is disadvantaged in this particular issue because of businesses on the North Dakota side and what businesses cannot do on the Minnesota side. And it would be to just relay that situation to the governor's office so that he knows we're dealing with a situation that may not as be what other counties in the state are dealing with. I'm fine with following the law in terms of that. I don't want our board to do something that would be against that, but I do think it's important to relay the message that there's some hurt going on and some significant disadvantage going on.
I'd have to agree with that comment, but I also gotta, I think we gotta remember that Clay County is one of the highest cases. I mean, I think we're up in the 370s, 390s already, cases of COVID-19. So, I think that's gotta be taken into consideration too.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Mojo's thought about the importance of letting the governor know what we're up against being a border city. Going to the rule of law for just a second, Brian, so when the governor issues an executive order under the emergency situation like this, that in essence does become law. Is that correct? And I certainly, I certainly don't, and I've had, I've had local businesses asking the county to step up and basically defy law. And I, for one, can't do that. However, and this goes to some of the questions that I was, that I was asking Kathy McKay earlier. We're entering Phase Two on June 1st, and you know, it talks about what would be allowed. And it seems to me Phase Three would really become better for some of our local businesses. However, there's no criteria for going from Phase Two to, well, there is, or we don't know what it is. She says that, you know, that's going to be up to the governor. And I just, you know, I don't want to start seeing goalposts being moved here. And, you know, is it going to be September? Are we gonna, I've been told about, you know, a business or two that have already said they're not reopening. They can't reopen, they're not even be able to reopen in Moorhead. And that's troubling too, to hear that. And I don't know, you know, how many more we're going to be. One of the other things that, when you look at even what's happening on June 1st, where they allow outdoor dining, I was trying to, I was trying to go over our businesses, especially just in the metro area of Moorhead, Dilworth. A lot of our current restaurants and bars won't even be able to meet that because they don't have the outdoor dining capacity. And, you know, so then it becomes, well, they say, well, you might be able to use part of your parking lot or whatever. And I just, I just want to say that I, you know, I think if that becomes a necessity, and that's the only thing they have to work with, I don't want the next thing coming down as, well, our zoning ordinance don't allow you to operate in parking lots. That's something that I think that our local communities can address to ease those zoning issues, to allow that. And I, you know, and I think that we as a county board should come out and say that whatever we can do in terms of zoning issues within our county to allow what would be acceptable under the governor's law, that we should, we should ease those restrictions on zoning issues. You know, because like I know on Moorhead, a business, and I, I'm going to specifically talk about restaurants and bars, but it applies to a lot of retail places, where you have to have X amount of parking spaces based on the size of your business. And, you know, so I would hate to say, well, because you might just have that fixed number of parking spaces, if you take two or three or four of those away to put picnic tables or whatever out there, now you're, now you're violating the zoning. That's, this is what I'm talking about. And I, so I think we need to, you know, encourage our, all of our communities throughout the county to relax those zoning issues as it relates to that. So, at least they have a chance to move on. And if there's a, if there's an area where there might be an alleyway or something like that, that somebody might be able to convert on a temporary basis, we should, we should be looking at, encouraging our local communities to do that. So, and that shouldn't be a problem.
No, I think, I think you've heard a lot of business owners and other government entities talk about, we need to get creative. You know, we've had exceptional circumstances up to this point. I don't think we can just stop and say, well, we have this absolute piece and we're not going to change things, or not allow to relax some of those standards. Try to do as much we can to help businesses reopen. I think, I read Representative Marquardt's comments in the paper. He specifically brought up Ohio Cafe, you know, in his district, a local establishment that we've all enjoyed, I enjoy. They have a very difficult situation because they don't have place to go in front, they're right on a busy roadway, they don't have a place to go in back. I mean, so they're sort of stuck, and that's the difficulty. And I think, again, advocating that the governor relook at and think about what he needs to do is one thing, but telling businesses, go ahead and just do whatever you want to do, and we're not going to follow the governor's executive orders is not the correct thing to do. I mean, we need to do the best we can to help businesses without advocating, I think, against the executive order.
And I just want to go back, I just want to go back to my comments about going from Phase Two to Phase Three, which is the area where we're going to start to see our businesses. Even then, they're still not going to be able to operate like they used to. But the fact of the matter is, is I would like to see something out today that says, okay, this is, this is what it's going to take for us to be able to go from Phase Two to Phase Three, not just have one person in St. Paul saying, well, I'll let you know when you qualify for Phase Three. You know, if I, if I'm in a community and we want to strive to meet the criteria, we want to know what the criteria is. And once we get there, you know, we don't know what it is. I can look at Phase Three and it says, well, this is what we'll do in Phase Three, but it doesn't give the criteria.
But even for, you know, the Phase Two that starts June 1st, what happens is you're picking winners, not us, but you're picking winners and losers based on size. And so, you have, Phase Two begins June 1st, outdoor dining is allowed, but you have a six-foot distance that must be maintained not to exceed 50. Well, if you have 50 customers with six-foot distance, that's an enormous outdoor area. It's just, there's no way that these businesses can make that happen.
And again, I think, again, whatever the board ultimately do, I mainly wanted to advise you, I would just advise you not to look toward a resolution, but I think wording something to the governor in regard to some of the confusion that's in there, I think that's one thing that is difficult, not knowing some of the criteria for opening and some of the difficulties, I think, is a third that I've heard a lot of, you know, where you have a small patio with four, say, four or five tables, that's almost nonusable because once you have one sitting on one end or even one in the middle, you're basically done. And so, a lot of them are saying they wouldn't even bother to open because, as far as that type of seating. So, I think the difficulties that you've already expressed, Commissioner Mojo, about the being a border community and having to deal with other businesses that are already opening up in North Dakota that we uniquely have, or maybe Grand Forks, East Grand Forks as well, you know, that issue, I think, what you've talked about, Commissioner Campbell, not really seeing or hearing criteria to at least help businesses know and plan better, I think would be another thing to express, you know, again, written or orally, whatever else would want to be done. I mean, my main thing was to make sure, and I just know, I know our board knows what right looks like. And so, I just was surprised to see at least one community come out pretty strongly in the opposite direction that I think was problematic. And if you saw in the paper, their county attorney was advising them strongly not to do it, yet they had a lot of discussion about coming out with a resolution defying the governor's order. I would just suggest we don't do that, but we can definitely let the governor know that one size does not fit all, and that we really need to rethink some of these things to make sure it helps our business.
Well, if I was in the service industry in Clay County, and I was laid off because it, one, neither didn't make sense for my employer to hire me back because they're not making the money to even rationalize paying me, and was still unemployed, if North Dakota is open, at some point, I have to come to the realization that I need to work. And so, I may go to North Dakota to get that position. So, whenever the governor decides to open these facilities, we might not have employees.
I agree with that. And on top of that, you know, again, the border cities thing, we'd have to be kidding ourselves to suggest that people from Moorhead aren't going over to Fargo. And so, when it comes to any potential risks of the coronavirus, you know, if we still have our, if our places are closed and everybody's going over to Fargo, you know, what, what's that really doing for prevention? You know, and again, that's a border cities issue where one has one set of rules and one has another. I certainly am not advocating that we have a big free-for-alls like I saw on early morning news this morning where there were thousands of people in a swimming pool, but, you know. But I think we, I do think we should send something to the governor, maybe copy to AMC so that they understand what we're talking about in terms of border communities. I think, you know, and maybe, Brian, you could even help draft that letter.
I think between Steve and I, we could probably help draft it to allow the board to see it.
Yeah. Based on, based on the topics and concerns we've addressed this morning. And then, Steve, I, you know, I don't know, I would also like to see us, from a county standpoint, maybe reach out to our, all of our municipalities within the county, asking them to review their, what they have in terms of zoning that would restrict businesses from being able to follow where we are in the current phases of this, of this shutdown. And that, you know, and that, you know, could they lift those issues on a temporary basis?
We've talked about that at the Cass-Clay Food Partners that I'm a part of, and that's part of why Fargo took up the, you could take liquor to go, they changed their ordinance to allow that, and now they're allowing the Boulevard Garden type thing. And so, our planning and zoning director department is represented on that, but I think it's important to work with the cities to see what's allowed, or farmers, I don't even know, can farmers markets open in June?
I don't believe so at this time. Yeah. I did do a little bit of research, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, during, during an emergency declaration, cities have the ability to waive their three readings and changes of ordinance. And so, our city, City of Moorhead and our municipalities would be able to act much more quickly than they normally would be able to under regular times, so.
I did want to mention one final thing too, and that, and that goes to our businesses that have, you know, that have called me and with this concern, I, I think we would be putting, potentially putting our county at real risk based on liabilities to suggest that we ignore what is law. I, I think we, I think you've heard that from MCI 2, haven't you, Steve?
Yes.
That we could, we could really be, I'd hate to start seeing lawsuits happen, that because you did this, the county's responsible for somebody, you know, getting COVID, and who knows what else.
Okay, any further, Steve?
I would note that I have asked, I talked to Lori Johnson, I have asked Lori to come out to board next week to talk a little bit about 2019 as a whole, and also the first quarter of 2020, although not a lot of that was impacted. We did, just to kind of give the board a heads up, we did property tax-wise, last year at this point, we had received about 53%. We're at about 52.5% this year in collections. So, we are a little bit below, but fairly close. And the big number that we're looking for now, or the big date is June, right around June 6th, 5th, we're supposed to be getting the next sales tax information, and that would be our, for April, so it'll be our first month of, to see the real impact. But as you recall, in March, we did, we actually had an additional $30,000 in comparison to what we had a year ago. So, we'll hopefully be able to have that information soon.
Okay, with that, I think our next thing on the agenda is closed session, so.
I'll move to closed session.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to go to closed session.
Okay, we're back in session again from our closed session. Any further action we need from that closed session?
Mr. Chair, I, after our discussion, I think there is a consensus amongst the Clay County Board that our appointed representative, Jay Leach, to the Buffalo Red Watershed District, should be removed for cause, and that he is not representing the, in the board's opinion, he is not representing the interests of the Clay, citizens of Clay County. And so, based on that, I would make the motion that we remove Jay Leach as our representative to the Buffalo Red Watershed District.
I would second that motion.
Effective?
Effective at the time the vote is taken by the board, if it's approved.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion.
should be removed for cause and that he is not representing the, in the board's opinion, he is not representing the interests of the Clay, citizens of Clay County. And so based on that, I would make the motion that we remove Jay Leach as our representative to the Buffalo Red Watershed District.
I would second that motion.
Effective?
Effective at the time the vote is taken by the board, if it's approved.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to remove Jay Leach and a second, a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would request a roll call vote.
We're going to have a roll call vote on that. Any discussion, any further discussion, excuse me. Okay, Steve, would you do a roll call vote for us?
Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, 5-0, to remove Jay Leach as our representative on the Buffalo Watershed Board, effective immediately. Any further things for the board? Not, we're adjourned.